It is six thirty-three PM and I want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October eighteenth Planning Commission meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Marley.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, here.
Dan. Mr. Spatafora.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, I'm present.
Okay.
All present and accounted for, sir.
We're unanimous, that's great. The next item is the approval of previous meeting minutes. Is there any discussion?
If not, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the previous Planning Commission meeting.
And I'll support.
Motion to approve by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Okay, and Mr. Bentley abstains because he was, he was absent last time. Okay. So we have six ayes and one abstention. Number five, approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion, additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no deletions, corrections, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
And Mr. Oliver, supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Old business. Mr. Spataf- or Mr. Skirdo, do we have any old business?
No old business tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, sir. Then we'll move on to new business. Special land use, Twenty-One Mile and Card gas station, permanent parcel, zero-eight-three-five-one-zero-zero-zero-four, located on the southeast corner of Twenty-One Mile Road and Card, section thirty-five, Twenty-One Card LLC petitioner. Mr. Skirdo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hardy. Tonight, we have, the gas station at Twenty-One Mile and Card has come in front of you for two approvals. The first is a special land use for a outdoor storage, a firewood, propane, and I believe it's window washing fluid, washer fluid. That's the only special land use in front of you. Provided special land use is given, we can move on to the site plan approval. As you can see on the screen behind you, the storage areas will be facing, near the front corner of the building, that is facing Twenty-One Mile Road. And it'll be up against the building. We've run this by all the comments, through all the departments, is seen here a number of times, this is a common use and it's been approved for other commercial gas stations. No department expects us to impact any adjacent properties. There were some, the fire comments came in, the applicant took care of that, that had to do with spacing of the propane away from doors and from combustible materials. Again, some of the comments. It would, the vehicular and pedestrian traffic is not impacted, as this will be on the sidewalk and the walk in that area is wide enough to accommodate the storage as well as allowing pedestrians to flow past. I'm just gonna go through the comments, let you read some of these. It said, no one, none of the departments expects us to have any harmful effects anywhere. And staff uniformly recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay. Is a petitioner in the audience? I think I saw you, sir. Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please. Okay, one moment. Can we hear him? Are we able to hear? I'm talking to the guy behind you in the blue. Are we able to hear the petitioner? Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna move you to the, to the podium. And I'm sorry for that.
I don't think these are on.
Yep.
Mine's, mine's.
Mine sounds like it's on.
Yeah.
How you doing? I'm Kenny Coza, Twenty-One Card LLC. I'm the owner. I'm also going to be the developer, the builder of the property. I've been in the gas station business for twenty years.
And your address too, please, sir?
My address of business is twenty-five hundred Northwestern Highway, Suite fifty, Southfield, four-eight-zero-three-four.
Okay. And then gentleman behind you, if you'd like to just step up.
Of course. Good evening, Jim Butler with PEA Group. Our address is eighteen forty-nine Pond Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan, four-eight-three-two-six. We're here to answer any questions you may have about the special land use. I think Mr. Skirdo did a good job explaining what, when, where we are looking to place these items out on that walkway in front of the, of the store. We don't feel it's an inconvenience, we feel it's consistent with other developments of the similar type. So if you have questions, we're sure to be willing to answer those.
Okay. And are you part of this too, sir?
Yep.
Yep, come on up.
Yeah, this is, this is Mel Bieber from GAVN Associates. Address is two-four-zero-zero-one Orchard Lake Road in Farmington. We're here to answer a question and work with the city and cooperate on any issues or comments you guys have.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Question.
Mr. Oliver, we'll start with you, sir.
Okay. On the firewood, is this pre-packed firewoods or?
Yes, pre-packed firewood.
It's, it's the little plastic, it's not gonna be?
Correct, with the little handles that you're able to carry with.
Okay. And then windshield washer, three-high?
Correct, about three-tier high.
The standard that, when you go to a fuel station?
Correct.
Two to three-high, two on the top so people can know there's windshield washer, and the propane will be in a tank, secured?
Correct. Brand-new cages. We always keep them very clean and immaculate. When you see later on, I believe I sent in the elevations of the gas station, we like to do everything at a very high level and keep a very nice aesthetic and clean aesthetic of the property. Obviously curb appeal is incredibly important to us, so as at the same time, it might seem that firewood and propane and wash fluid might mess with my aesthetics, but we do it in such a way that it's actually just another amenity to the surrounding area.
And the old propane that I'm switching out goes in the, the new propane spot?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And Mr. Bentley?
I have a couple of questions. Following up with the old, the old tanks, the rusty ones, those go in the same cage then, right?
Correct.
Okay. I, on the elevations, you mentioned it was shown. The only elevations that we have is of the building, it didn't show any of these amenities?
No, I'm sorry. I meant to just, in terms of just showing you the level and the look and the aesthetics of the gas station, that we wouldn't want to do something that would harm the kind of look, so, you know, we know it's important to make sure that the cages are not the rusty ones and that they're brand-new cages and that the firewood is well organized as well as the washer fluid, so that it keeps in, in line with the look and feel that we're trying to accomplish with our type of building.
In looking at the plan, and I'm not sure it's, yeah, of that oval, could you tell me the order or where, like, the bottles will be stored? Will they be on the corner or will the bottles be on the opposite end, near the, where the building kicks out a little bit?
Do you have a preference?
I do not, but the space is different for each, so I don't know how big your cabinet is, and I, I guess I'd like to?
Typically, I'd like it to go with the washer fluid to be closest to the door, then the firewood, and then the propane.
Okay. All right, and the four-foot-eight, you know how, why your cabinet is?
For the propane?
Yeah.
There you are, roughly four-foot-eight, correct.
Okay. I, I had some questions. I believe those will be taken care of, maybe in a subsequent submission, but in general, they might be of a concern that you could check out and make sure that you're, there's no surprises, however. The propane is supposed to be ten-foot away from any combustibles. So my, my questions were, if the propane is supposed to be ten-foot away from any combustibles, there's a canopy over this window, is, does the canopy have any combustible materials? Canvas or something that?
No, it's, it's a, it's a metal canopy.
So it's all metal, framing?
Correct.
The sheet, okay. And then my only other concern was, it's not supposed to be in close proximity to an exit way or access, exit access? It's, it's near a window, and so that might be something you check your codes. It's, it's near a window and it's right opposite the exit way of the walk-in cooler.
So that, that window is a faux window, behind that is coolers?
Yes.
So it's, it's a fake window, you can't exit from that window?
No, you can't, but it is just glass and aluminum, right? And the, and the foam sheet metal, encased foam panel for the cooler is just that, not a lot of fire rating there. So my concern was flammability, but in case there's a valve that blows, there's not much protection there for the, the people within the cooler that are exiting there. I'm not sure if people that go into the beer cave can get into, all the way back into that cooler, but for the workers anyway, that would just be a concern that, that I'm bringing up, that you might be able to check that out.
Yeah, so the, the core or the structure of the gas station is cinder block, it's CMU, so that, so it's basically fake glass spandrel, then masonry, then cooler. So the masonry is actually acting as a buffer.
You have a masonry wall behind that glass window?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a spandrel, it's a spandrel window. We could build like a wall behind it, so the continuously would be like a cinder block going all the way up, but we don't have a brick as a finish, so we have a window. So the fake window could be like, behind, it could be like cinder block.
Okay.
So that would be like, it's already like fire rated by default, these.
Let me be clear, I'm not saying you have to do that, I'm just saying it might be a requirement that this location needs to be considered. So just check it out. Don't do it because I, I have this concern. I would just, that might be an option to do if it's required. I'm not sure if you need fifteen minutes, you need an hour fire separation or, or something to block any kind of, I've seen gas bottle, or LP got gas tanks blow, and it's not pretty. There's, there's a home around here that's been destroyed by one, so, and it just fell over, that's all. So it's just a concern. Just?
All right.
Check her out.
We'll check it.
Thanks.
Yep. We appreciate your concern.
That's, that's all I had on that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, as far as the preliminary site plan that we have before us, there, as far as the gas pumps, there's still six of them that you plan?
Correct.
Okay, and they run perpendicular facing Twenty-One Mile Road?
Correct.
And as far as propane, is this just going to be a propane tank exchange, or will you have underground propane, propane to fill empty canisters for customers?
Just exchange.
Only?
Only.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Sp- Mr. Skirdo? Do you know how many gas stations we have in the township?
Oh geez.
By chance? Of hand?
I, I, you gotta be at least a dozen.
No, yeah. And they all have stuff outside, correct?
Oh yes, you just remember Myers came in for special land use, I know you approved it for them, I was part of that matter, and other ones, yeah, we've gone and looked, other gas stations all have the outdoor storage.
Okay, all right. All right, well, normally I would open it to the public with a motion.
One quick question.
Oh, oh.
To the petitioner, is this your first fuel stop in McComb Township?
Yes.
So you've been, you're a west sider, now you're gonna be an east sider?
Correct.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Very excited. I was just saying earlier, this is the, your city hall, your campus, is everything is the nicest I've ever seen.
Great.
So, you guys are very lucky.
Bring your friends. Bring, bring on.
For sure.
But thank you. That's it.
Okay.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Because you mentioned you were real strong.
And that's fine?
Yeah.
You know, normally I would open it to the public with a motion, but there is no one here, so I'm going to, just for the record, just state that, that there is no one present here.
And public, no.
Okay, so, do we, do we have a motion for this?
If no further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend special land use approval for Twenty-One Mile and Card Road gas station, permanent parcel number zero-eight-three-five-one-hundred-zero-zero-four for Twenty-One Card LLC petitioner, for the reasons as stated by Mr. Skirdo and support of all the departments.
Okay.
And I'll support.
Oh, Mr. Bentley?
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Bentley. He beat you out, Mr. Myers.
Okay.
Would you please call the roll, please, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, I will, yes. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Next item, site plan. Twenty-One Mile and Card gas station, permanent parcel zero-eight-three-five-one-zero-zero-zero-four, located on the southeast corner of Twenty-One Mile Road and Card Road, section thirty-five, Twenty-One Card, Twenty-One Card LLC petitioner. Mr. Skirdo?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. As you can see on the board behind you, the gas station is in the corner of the Fremont Plan Unit Development. It's phase two of that development. If you recall, the residential portion has come in front of you in the past. There will be a car wash on Card Road to the south. Also, we have seen preliminary plans for an oil change facility and possibly a Montessori school along Twenty-One Mile to the east. Renderings, you can see the renderings of what the gas station's gonna look like. Possibly I can ask the applicant to point out the one on the left, is that facing from Twenty-One Mile Road? It looks to be.
Yes, it is.
Okay, it looks to be. You can see access and loading. The access to the station was not directly from Card Road or Twenty-One Mile Road, it's from an internal service road that's part of the Plan Unit Development. The internal service road does serve all the other non-residential uses in the PUD. There is a loading area proposed near the dumpsters, you can see in the yellow square down in the southeast portion of the property. There is a drive-through proposed, the plan shows a, maybe a Tim Hortons. Stacking space is shown in purple, it meets code. We checked out parking for all the interior uses as well as the drive-through facility, the amount of parking space required is fifty, fifty-seven are provided, which meets ordinance. You can look at the dimensions for setbacks, they all meet ordinance, the minimum building floor area meets ordinance, and the building height meets ordinance. All the dimensions are on the graphics above. Landscaping and screening, the counts that they're doing matches the drawings, or staff is good with that. Roof mount appliances are appropriately screened, as noted on the drawing. In the end, we do recommend site plan approval, as all zoning items have been met. And that's my conclusion.
Gentlemen, you already gave us your names and addresses, so we're good with that. Do you have anything you'd like to, to share?
Just really anxious and looking forward to develop this project in your city.
Okay. Commissioners? Mr. Oliver?
When, when do you think you could break ground?
Probably springtime.
I, I missed.
Oh, springtime.
Spring, okay. Is it gonna be a show?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes the renderings don't match what it actually is gonna be, but good.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Skirdo. Mr. Skirdo, I don't know if you know this offhand, but do you know the distance from the call box to the residential component? And if that was covered within the PUD, the distance? It looks, it looks like it's within our three-hundred foot.
Yeah, I don't know the exact dimension, but yes, it was covered during the PUD review, we did go through the call box dimensions, but I don't have that specific dimension in front of me, but I know staff went through and checked out everything.
And it's either within the setbacks or it's covered into the PUD?
Correct.
As far as you know?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bentley?
Partial follow-up to Mr. Tuckfield's question. The three-hundred feet, I, and as near as I could tell, it's, it's very close.
Yes.
Both to across the street and to the residential, to the south, southeast.
Correct.
But I did have a note that needs to be verified, because it does say a minimum three-hundred feet, so if the PUD still kept with the three-hundred feet, we didn't have that detail when the PUD was being, I should say, reviewed. The location of these call buttons were not identified. So that was one area that I thought you had to be verified. And you're saying the staff had?
The staff, we went, I worked with staff, I know, I didn't do the calculations, but they're very thorough when they do these reviews, they check out every dimension out there, so I'm comfortable that the staff did verify it's three-hundred feet has met.
Okay. Couple other questions, as it relates to the site. You have a reinforced concrete pad up in the, can you bring it back to the plan of?
Sure. Which one would you like?
Yeah, that's good.
That's good, Mr. Bentley. I can move that back one more if you like.
No, that's good. The concrete pad that's to the west of the canopy for the pumps, is that for filling? Is that for filling operations? Tanker, tanker filling?
Oh, yes, correct.
Okay, so my only concern was that, depending on how the tanker's supposed to go in there, and maybe you can fill me in, that might disrupt circulation through there when, when they're in a filling operation, and so that was one concern. And the other concern is if we have a big tanker truck going through there, do you find that a heavy-duty asphalt pavement is sufficient? So you want to get, tear up the, the pavement there, or should that be extended to north to the, to the corner?
So over the, the gas tanks is concrete?
Yes.
Concrete apron? And, and no, I, the asphalt's able to hold up on it?
Okay.
We always go four inches, eight inches of crushed Twenty-One double-A, it withstands it.
Okay, and then as the tank, where's the tanker sit? Does it close off the, the circulation there, either to the south of the canopy or to the north of the canopy?
It's gonna sit kind of lengthwise, or I should say angled with the side of the canopy, not to obstruct traffic too much, but the time of loads, I mean, the time that we get our loads usually isn't during our peak hours, so it's usually doesn't affect any of the circulation.
All right. But while it's there, you're saying that the tanker is not going to be impeding circulation?
It shouldn't. Not to say that the driver's a good parker, you know, all the time, but yeah, he shouldn't impede in circulation.
It's just the first time I've seen it like that. And so that was a concern of mine. I'll, I'll go on to my other concerns and, and that, that might be something that maybe somebody looks at.
Well, when you park on the side of the canopy, there should be enough space to be able to go around the, the truck from either side. Because we have about, how much is that?
Thirty-five feet.
How long is that? That tanker truck's sixty-foot long, isn't it?
No, no, well, we have thirty-five feet wide, so the trucker, I couldn't quote you on the, how wide the tanker is, but we're thirty-five feet width there, so if he parks adjacent to the canopy, there should be plenty of room to rotate around him, if needed.
Okay. All right. That was just a concern. On the drive-through, I'm looking on the signage, there's nothing that says that that is a, there's no signage that says this is the drive-through, where the drive-through starts, where the entrance is, and I was kind of looking for a signage that indicates, you know, that. I don't see it. Probably should be somewhere near that, what would be the southwest corner of the sidewalks there. Normally, normally you see little arrows.
Oh, you're talking about the, I thought you were talking about the front signage, you're talking about the drive-through signage?
The drive-through signage.
So we do have a reader board.
You have a reader board, way, a menu board, way down line. Where's your, where's your direction signs?
Well, it could be in the southwest corner, so we could put it there.
Southwest corner, sometimes they paint it on the pavement, I didn't see that. You do mark out your, your, your arrows and that, but just to preclude any kind of confusion there, in that little island, there's plenty of room to put something there, which you normally do see.
I like that idea, we can do that.
And then on the other end of this island, where they come after paying and after they're picking up their product, whatever they're picking up, peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, whatever it might be, there's no, that's a one-way traffic, there's no sign that says, do not enter when you're coming in off of what would be Twenty-One Mile Road and then turning in. It's two-way traffic there. You should be turning, turning right at that point. There's no sign that stops somebody from continuing through. So I don't know if the plan is that that is supposed to be two-way. You only show one arrow.
It's one-way, it's one-way.
Yeah, there should be a do-not-enter sign.
Yeah.
At the north.
A do-not-enter, either on both sides of those two islands might be helpful, just so they see it.
Yep.
I know when I'm driving, sometimes I don't look both ways, so, it's just a consideration, okay? Then the other is your loading zone, is that a, is that a deep, it's a little confusing the way it's, it's got the poaching. Is that a, a deep-strength asphalt, or no?
Yes, that is a deep-strength asphalt.
Okay. All right. And then, yeah, the only other thing was the, the generator, where the generator and the transformer are. I, I don't, I at first thought there needed to be a, a guard post, or a guard post or a bollard there to protect the, protect the transformer and generator. I see that you have landscaping there, but the landscaping is only thirty-six inches high. It's some very small and, and single-depth plantings, and, and I thought, it's not gonna stop any kind of, any noise, and we've got, we've got residences, at least to the south, southeast. I don't, I don't think it's gonna bother anybody across Card Road, but is there a way that they can either be higher or deeper, you know, like two rows of whatever and, and a little higher? Because that generator's probably at least three-foot high. And the exhaust, I don't know if it's a gas, natural gas or?
It's natural gas.
Natural gas.
I also always install what they call sound attenuant enclosure. I don't know, I forget off the top of my head what it reduces the DB to. I'm not a hundred percent if I submitted the generator spec to you guys or not, did I, did you not? Okay, so I can submit? Did I, did you not? Okay, so I can submit that, but I always get a sound attenuant enclosure. Because I'm, my other projects are near residents as well, and we're always conscious of that. And, you know, it cycles, you know, once a week for about fifteen minutes, as I'm sure you know, but, uh, and then we could screen it with Arboretis. I don't know if, you know, and, uh.
We've got a double row in.
Double row in, you know.
I forget what you have there now.
We have Arboretis.
You have Arboretis, but it's, it's, it's one small little row and they're only three, three foot high. And the generator's probably four or.
We can, we can, we can spec another one.
That'd, that'd be my consideration, that yes, you'd have a sound, uh, attenuating enclosure. And, uh, and, uh, I don't. It's a consideration, okay?
Yep, that's, that's not a problem. Most of them come with it these days. So it's just, um, so it's not a problem.
I'd hate to have nuisance calls from, uh, the residences when they start, um, coming in, uh, just a good neighbor thing.
No, we're in hospitality. We want happy customers.
Okay. So, uh, sound attenuation and, and maybe something a little more with the landscaping, then is that fair?
That's fair.
I don't think there's anything else. I'm sorry for taking up your time. That's all I got, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Yes, for, um, I had a question or two, if you don't mind, please. For the, uh, your drawings for the interior floor plan of the building. It's, is, is this a wide-open floor plan which would, uh, be open for both like the gas station, convenience store aspect, and the drive-through restaurant, uh, or the drive-through component?
There, there will be a connection between them two. There'll be a doorway. But the gas station isn't wide open to the tenant. The tenant's gonna have to, needs its ability to be able to lock down at night and separate from us and has separate hours. And, uh, but the gas station itself is a wide-open concept, which also has a food use inside by us.
But that food use inside, that will be wide open and that's just for drive-through for those, uh, customers in the drive-through?
Correct.
Okay. Is the pickup window, at least with the floor plan we see, is that what you have labeled Beer Cave?
No, not the, the pickup win, the Beer Cave is, uh, the pickup window is on the opposite side of the Beer Cave.
It's on the opposite side. Okay. So that interior floor plan is not really superimposed over the preliminary lance, or the preliminary, uh, site plan, the drawing before it.
It's rotated.
It's rotated around, okay.
North is down.
Got it. Okay, I understand.
Turn a hundred and eighty degrees, it's right.
I see it. I understand it now. Thank you. Okay. And you're just gonna have one, uh, entrance for ingress and egress for that entire building then?
We have two.
You have two?
Yeah, one at the front, one at the back, and one in the back.
Okay, and that's for both, for customers or?
This is, could be for the customers also.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, this could also for the drive-through.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafor. Mr. Bentley?
Mr. Spatafor brought up some, uh, reminded me to ask a question regarding the lease space. All the, all the cooking that they need will be in that lease space, correct?
Correct.
Because there's no connection other than, uh, near the front of the building. There doesn't appear to be a door there, but you're saying they want that locked down, uh, after hours or something?
Correct.
Okay, so they'll, they will have something in their package that will lock that down?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, and they're not using any of these, these kitchen, uh, the kitchen facilities that are in the other part of the building?
And actually, I'm sorry, I, I stand corrected on that. You know, we don't have the tenant one hundred percent, hundred percent signed right now. We have a bunch of options. So it's possible that the tenant has the same hours as us, and that they may not want to, you know, lock down. Being that if we're permitted to go twenty-four-seven and the tenant also wants to go twenty-four-seven, then they might not opt out, they might opt to not have a door between us. So it's really up to their discretion on that.
Okay, so twenty-four-seven is a possibility that this call box will be used?
Correct. Well, if it's a Tim Hortons, generally the traffic for a Tim Hortons starts at four AM. You know, I'm gonna say that's a very busy time, but, you know, their busiest coffee hours are obviously past five AM. And, you know, they're usually twenty-four-seven operation. And so are all my gas stations are twenty-four-seven.
Thank you. And then the, uh, the Beer Cave. I'm not a beer guy, but, uh, is the Beer Cave something that you walk into? And then you can walk into the coolers on either side?
You could, if you really wanted to, you know, get lost in there, but no, generally not. There, there are, you know, barriers, let's call it, that would preclude the customer from going into the other sides of the cooler, but really it's for um, us being able to refrigerate cases of beer for you guys and to provide a nicer like look and element for beer shopping. It has sliding doors, so when you easily walk in, you can grab your cases. Hopefully you get two, and you walk out without a problem and haven't opened the door. And so it's really just to be able to have refrigerated cases, because typically you can't fit a case inside of a regular cooler door.
Okay. And do you have a, what would be, um, Butler's, uh, elevator going to the second floor?
Correct. It's for extra storage.
Okay. I think that'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I got a que, how, how many, uh, how many gas stations do you have? Do they all have cooking kitchens?
I have three gas stations, two have cooking, but the one that doesn't, I'm gonna redevelop that one as well, do same exact prototype. So this is kind of my new look. I plan to do five of these. This is the first of two that are gonna happen next year, if I'm obviously approved. And so, and I hope to do three more following this.
Okay, and they all have call boxes?
They all are, yes, gonna have call boxes, correct.
And you're gonna have kerosene?
Not at this property, no.
Okay, diesel?
Diesel, yes. Diesel will be at the pump.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, last question regarding the call button. Is that in an acoustic, uh, will there, will that be directionally acoustically, um, shielded at all? Some are, some aren't.
Shielded? I'm not sure what you mean by shielded.
Just a perforated panel or something that directs that sound right back to the car, um, or absorbs, uh, a lot of that? So, so that you don't have this loudspeaker going?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's the newest technology. It's obviously a digital, kind of, uh, looks like a TV. It is directed towards the consumers, they can, you know, obviously they can hear each other, um, the customer and the employee. But in terms of those exact, uh, specs, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Skurdo, did you have anything else you'd like to share?
Uh, no, Mr. Hardy.
Okay, then, uh, we have, we would normally again, open it to the public, but there's no one here, so do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Mr. Tuckfield?
The petitioner, we had several items brought up by Mr. Bentley. I believe there was signage going into the drive-through, signage coming out of the drive-through, and bushes, um, and you had mentioned sound attenuation walls. If I was to make a motion this evening that included that as part of the motion, are you agreeable to that? Is that something you're willing to offer?
Correct, but, uh, when you say it's, it's, it's a sound attenuant enclosure, so it's not not walls that are built outside the generator. The generator enclosure is a sound attenuant enclosure, and yes, I'd be willing to agree to that.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Oliver, we're okay. I know we, we have a line there that we shouldn't be.
Just.
I, I think with site plans, you, you can add conditions to it.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Oliver?
Especially if the, if the petitioner or the applicant is agreeing to it.
Okay.
Can you clarify? You want another enclosure?
No, the, the applicant indicated that he's looking at putting, and I'll make sure I say enclosure and not walls, my apologies. An enclosure around the generator that helps with the sound. And so I wanted it noted as part of the site plan, assuming that he's willing to offer it.
Correct. The sound attenuant enclosure is an insulated enclosure as opposed to without it having insulation, so just like your home, if you didn't have insulation or sound attenuating and battening, then.
I assume it's just, it's, it's a commercial cabinet for the generator.
Correct, that's insulated, yep.
But it, it'll probably come with a.
They don't all do. It's an upgrade, and then you can even upgrade it further. Because I develop hotels and I put them right next to the hotel. And so I do get them higher rated, so that's why in terms of the DB, I couldn't tell you exactly what the first level comes to, but there are three levels of sound attenuant enclosures, and I'm happy to do the first level.
So just to get one thing real clear. All that stuff, the enclosure, the silence around the muffler, that's all stuff you could add on your, your machine? Now, if you buy it with that stuff, are you wanting him to make an additional enclosurement?
No.
Okay.
No, I, I was, I wanted to acknowledge what he had noted that was not on our site plan.
Okay. So if, just so I'm getting everyone clear, if the petitioner specs his generator with a, with a soundproof enclosure, because I know they're available, and a silenced muffler, that would satisfy what you're asking him now?
I believe so. The applicant indicated there's multiple levels of silencing, and he's looking at a base level, so I'm not sure if the way you're describing it, it would, can be considered an advanced level or not. I just want to make sure that if he's, um, offering something that is beyond a unmuffled generator, I want to make sure that it's on the record as opposed to not.
Yeah. How many K or, uh, watt generator?
It's gonna be a hundred KW.
Hundred KW, so it's a V-eight motor or a six-cylinder diesel generally. So yeah, them can get loud. So, but there are, there are, there are products that you could buy, a silenced muffler. And that, that quiet that thing right down the?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so that's fine.
To be clear to the applicant, you're looking at a sound attenuating enclosure and a muffler for the generator. Is that accurate or just the enclosure?
Not all generators come with mufflers, so that's one you probably don't want to tie me to. Sound attenuating enclosure, yes.
Okay, very good. And again, I, I would probably prefer a muffler, but I mostly want to make sure if it's something that's not on our drawings that we know what the applicant is offering.
Is there, was there something else?
We have to have a hundred K takes a lot of horsepower. And that's a large motor, so you have to have a muffler on that thing. Or the first day that thing fires up, everyone's gonna be screaming.
Sure.
So regardless, it's gotta have.
Doesn't the muffler come standard if you were to buy a new generator?
Generally, when you buy generator, that, that's stuff I buy, so I know a little bit about it, so generally, they come with enclosures. And they're, and they put silence, silencing product in there, foam and stuff. Then there's generally three styles of mufflers. The standard muffler. Then there's a, another grade up, and then there's a real high grade. I think the second grade would be perfect for what you have.
Okay.
So as the weather enclosure, um, the for protection, because it's outdoor. It's gonna have enclosure for the weather, it's gonna have enclosure for the sound attenuation.
That's gonna, the enclosure is what you really want. Because you don't want your, your machinery in the snow and the rain and weather, because when you need that is when you need it.
Yep.
And the more you can protect that, the better off you are, so it, it's the muffler that's gonna be the thing that you're really gonna want to focus on.
Okay.
Mr. Skurdo, if I could, do you know if we have any, any regulations with regards to the sound decibel levels on muffler, or on mufflers on a generator?
I'm not positive. I don't think we do, but I was going through the ordinance, I haven't found anything yet.
Okay. Just for myself, Mr. Oliver, I certainly would be, I would certainly want it to be quiet, but I would be hesitant to attach a muffler if the applicant is not offering it and we don't have it in the ordinance. It would be my concern if he's not offering it. And I guess I'll go to the applicant. You, I had mentioned it, you said you weren't, but I'm not sure where we stand.
No, so, you know, I'm not an expert in terms of generators, but I've bought enough to know a few things, and so the bigger ones that I've bought, the five hundred KWs have massive mufflers on top of them. The hundred KWs must have internal muffler, mufflers. I'm just thinking of my generators that I have. So I, I've never noticed a muffler on there. I don't know if they're internal, it came with it, maybe I didn't get one, they were brand-new when I bought them. So that's why I'm not knowledgeable of the mufflers, if it's something, I assume I can add it to any hundred KW, correct?
Today, today you're gonna get what they call a tier four motor. And it's gonna have two sets of mufflers on it. For one for emission and one for sound. So I, I think, you know, just don't get something without a muffler.
Gotcha, no problem. Usually I would think that when you get it as a, like a level one sound attenuant, or you, any level of the sound attenuant that automatically it has to hit a certain DB, that it would have that muffler, I would assume. If not, they're accomplishing it by some other form of lowering the decibels, so.
Alright, very good. That said then, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would make a motion to approve the site plan for the gas station at the corner of Twenty-One Mile and Card. Uh, with the inclusions as discussed regarding the signs inbound to the, um, drive-through, the sign outbound from the drive-through, the sound enclosure on the generator, a muffler on the generator, and taller, uh, evergreens double stacked to shield the generator as necessary. And that would be based on the findings that we had this evening, the discussion with the applicants, and the recommendations from the various departments.
I'll second that. Okay, Mr. Bentley, please cause the roll.
Sir. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Or, yeah, Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Yes. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I look forward to doing business in your city.
Welcome to the east side.
Thank you very much. I heard you guys drink a lot of beer aside from the Beer Cave for you guys. I know you want a refrigerator.
Did you know this is a dry county?
Alright, next item on our list is zoning ordinance amendment, flex-use zones. Mr. Skurdo?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. The next item is a a proposed change to the zoning ordinance. If you recall, the our twenty-twenty-two master plan allowed for, uh, some properties in the town should be considered flexed use. If you look at the map above you, everything in light blue, you'll see large swath along Twenty-Six Mile. You'll see a number of spaces along Hall Road. There's also one near, I believe that's near the, um, Ascension Health area along Twenty-Three Mile Road. Uh, there might be some other smaller ones around. I see one over at Twenty-Five and Romeo Plank, I believe. These were zones that the master plan looked at allowing a number of uses to be either developed simultaneously or developed together. It could be a mix of industrial, could be commercial, could be residential of any density. So we looked at that as a category in these large unused spaces, uh, and that would follow trends, what's happening at the time, so allow more flexibility in these areas. If you look at that, um, the draft language is in your packet tonight. The zoning, there will be zoning map amendments to correspond to the master plans will be presented for adoption following. Our comments we've received from you on the zoning language. The, the language does allow complementary mix of alternative uses, uh, residential, commercial, industrial, and office. And each of the uses, if somebody comes in with a certain use, we will look at what the typical zoning district is for that type of use and apply those development standards to those uses. Someone comes in with a use that falls underneath the C-two general commercial, we will look at land use requirements, separation requirements, and other, uh, design items. Someone comes in with the RM-one multiple family, we will look at the same requirements for that use as a site plan by site plan basis. Again, this, um, that's about it, uh, for this. It's a, it's a short ordinance amendment. Um, again, this is to allow mixed use in some of these larger areas that we, uh, the planning commission left open because we didn't have a specific land use to put on those properties.
So the McCombe Town Center that's gonna be developed. So the McCombe Town Center that's gonna be developed is considered flex, a flex use district?
No, McCombe Town Center has its own district. And it's got the, uh, traditional neighborhood uh, development district standards in place, those will be another district. When someone comes here, they have to follow those standards.
Um, an- another question, we approved uh, the twenty one and Card gas station.
Uh, yes.
And there's all sorts of things going on on that property, even a possible daycare.
Correct.
Um, why is that, would, would that not be considered a flex use district?
Because it's a PUD. We approved a PUD.
Okay.
It was.
Falls under the PUD ordinance.
Alright.
This is, this is specific parcels where we want to look at the flexibility of being able to, to um, be open minded to zoning based on the surrounding properties, uses, location within the township. So there's some areas, for instance, on twenty three mile.
Gotcha, alright, thank you.
Okay. Comments?
Chairman, I did uh, have some comments, or mostly one comment. Uh, Dave, I guess when I read this, um, maybe my understanding was flawed on it. But I know particularly we had a parcel on twenty three that came in for rezoning uh, to the west of uh, of Saint Isidors. And we postponed the rezoning at that point to wait for flex essentially to become an item.
Correct.
Um, and part of my understanding from that um, discussion and maybe some subsequent discussions was that this would be uh, maybe more of a form-based uh, district, uh, zoning district. And would allow us maybe some additional flexibility, uh, maybe similar to a special land use when we were putting um, industrial or, or heavier uses adjacent to other, other uses. Which gave us the flexibility to put those flexes in even though it's going next to residential. Um, this district as I'm reading it says that all of these zoning districts apply and can be used there, which doesn't seem to give a whole lot of latitude in buffering it uh, in unusual places. Was there a consideration for that, are we changing it or was I mistaken in my original interpretation?
Um. It's a lot of questions.
Sorry.
Let me try to, let me try to, let me try to, uh, think, it was talked about at some point, I remember early on discussions, we talked about flexibility. This ordinance doesn't uh, go directly that route and I, but I don't have an answer why it took this direction. Other than it was a convenient way to allow all flexible uses to go in without trying to create a whole very complicated ordinance.
So, so just to be clear, I mean, Mr. Box created this with Mr. Van Tiflin and Melissa. And unfortunately, Mr. Box is ill today and Mr. Van Tiflin is ill as well. So, um, I understand exactly what you're saying, this is something they created, there are some nuances. So tonight, you can consider this ordinance and approve it or make modifications to it. Or if you so desire and you want to get answers to those questions, we could always table this until Josh is back, Mr. Box is back and get those answers to those questions, so those are options tonight.
Yes.
Um, we, you know, Mr. Box is unexpectedly sick today, so um, I think he would have those answers for you, but unfortunately, he's not here.
Okay, and, and, and just as a general comment, I, I guess my concern would be, you know, we, we worked on the master plan. Obviously, you guys worked on the master plan more than we did, but we looked at that map and there's elements in that map that if um, obviously, we're, we're doing things in, in different sections. But if, if I had voted on that with the knowledge that someone could apply a unaltered commercial or industrialized use to that relative to our current zoning, I don't know that I would have wanted to approve the use in that way. I, and obviously, uh, uh, we gotta work with how we did it and we're trying to get stuff done. But um, this doesn't cover that in some of those cases, so that'll be my concern and obviously, I'm sure Josh has thought about it, so.
But it's a legit question, so I, you know.
Yes.
And, and we want to make sure this is correct, so I, all I'm saying is, if we want to prove it tonight, that's great. If not, we can table it until such time, we want to make sure it's correct.
Just my opinion, and I, I don't want to speak for the board here, I would prefer to hear uh, if there's more to it. As it stands and with my understanding of it, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it, but I certainly know there's been a lot of intelligent people who are thinking about it and I wouldn't want to dismiss it out of turn, I just would, I'd like to understand what the thinking was.
Sure, good questions.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, anyone else? Mr. Bentley.
Um, on, starting with uh, what Mr. Tuckfield was talking. Uh, as I reviewed this and, and it was the previous version, um, I haven't really dealt a whole lot with this uh, latest version that we received tonight, um, or in the email that uh, I, I didn't see earlier. But um, my concern with the way it's written, um, one is uh, that it allows uh, the permitted uses of C one, C two and C three districts uh, with no limitations. Um, it has industrial uh, uh, in there as well. Um, but there, there doesn't seem to be any guideline uh, in this use. If you take a look at uh, some of these smaller parcels uh, of flex use. Uh, it's, it's almost like first come, first serve. Um, and we, and, and I don't know that there's a vehicle here for us to preclude someone. Uh, let's say that has an industrial use coming in and putting that use in there with no room or very little room for anything else. Is the intent that all these uses be able to fit within that, that zoned area? So that it does in fact become flex for uh, adjacent, um, as it's worded here, maybe adjacent uh, zoning districts, whether it be residential or what have you. Um, when it comes before us, it doesn't seem like we have any guidelines that tell us, well, you're using half the space or three quarters of the space, there's not enough space there for anything else. Um, and how does that become, you know, flexible then? Uh, we have very little control over that. Um, in looking at a larger area like twenty six mile road, um, North Avenue area. Um, as it starts to develop, I, I picture it as being, we have a developer come in. He'd like to put in a certain uh, element. Um, it's not like a PUD where he comes, comes in with the full plan of, okay, we have our industrial. Uh, we have some office use, we have some commercial, and we've got some residential here adjacent to these existing residentials. It, it's not like looking at the whole picture so that we can, um, we can make an, an intelligent uh, decision as to whether or not it really, that this is really a good uh, combination uh, of sizes and that. I mean, we're going to some commercial places that require a minimum of five acres and uh, and office, uh, office uses that are ten story high. Except we do have the limitation of four story. Um, but there's so much, so much else, if we're adjacent to um, a lot of residential. Um, we still have to abide by all the same parking requirements that I've got twenty five foot from a ten or a four story building now to residential, uh, with a, a little six foot high uh, um, wall. I don't have any, I guess my bottom line is I don't, we don't have any control or any guideline that tells us, okay, a maximum su- some percent of that particular zoned district can be any one of these. Or, or that there has to be a certain mix, because as they come in, we might fill it up with, with commercial and can't use it for anything else. Uh, it no longer is, it's no longer flexible, it's commercial.
Yeah.
Um, and uh, and if we want a flex space and we want certain um, if we want certain districts within that particular flexible space. Like it might be different for there, it might be, um, it might be different for these different regions because of the adjacent districts. But we're not allowed to make that decision based upon this, it's whoever comes in here first. And since it's allowed for that district, can we say, no, sorry, it, it doesn't go. I, I'm not, I'm not sure what our parameters are, so um, other, others. Uh, that's the big one, I guess, um, there's a lot of little stuff in here, but um, you know, even noise and nuance limits. There's, there's, there's nothing there as it relates to putting all of these together with residences right on top of uh, commercial and industrial. I, I don't even know why we have some of those in those areas. Um, save our bigger industrial areas for, you know, a separate district. But um, at first, when I was looking at this, because there was no differentiation, I thought in the verbiage it was, and I think it's right here, um, it said the neighborhood center uh, in the original. And I thought, neighborhood center, that's uh, section nine. Um, and it didn't correlate with my idea of what that neighborhood center was going to be. And as uh, Mike kind of indicated, and you've clarified now, that's not the, you know, it's not that. So it's, it's the verbiage that has changed and I see that now. But I've got to relook at this, and I guess we've got to have answers to it, that too. And I think, I, I think this commission, uh, if we, if we bring out our concerns, might be helpful tonight. Uh, at least giving Josh a chance to look at them and.
Oh, absolutely.
You guys to think about them and maybe have another session like this.
I'm writing them all down.
So.
So.
That's why, and, and, and obviously, you might have covered it, I was absent the last meeting, section numbers are totally off, right?
Correct.
So, I, I kinda put in the right, you know, section numbers, but those could even change. Um, but uh, you know, just, just some of the requirements that are in the individual districts like commercial or industrial. Um, a- and I guess the other thing is, some of these districts don't agree in, in the big binder that we received of the initial, um, there's, there's no, there's not consistency there yet. Maybe some of those go away, some of them don't. Uh, but um, you can't use the same parameters when you're in a flex zone as you would when it's by itself in a district that is only for that use. Um, so uh, I guess I would say we need to look at those too and, and maybe make, tailor those uh, requirements for some of those districts. Um. Like I say, if, if a minimum for the C. And what was it for? Yeah, for O two, just to have an office building, yes, we lean it to four and we did that from ten as a minimum. But minimum five acres is still there, and it's still twenty five foot separation with a six foot, you know, a button, budding uh, wall. Yet we're trying to create a flex, flex uh, district. And um, I think maybe that's, that might have to change. As well, as well as if it's in an area that people can walk to, to work, like to an office building. And, and that flex space is now uh, used for office that people can go to and maybe a little bit of commercial, they can walk to it. We don't need as much parking as we normally need and waste all that space. Um, other forms of, of parking uh, could be um, identified, so. That's all, I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, Mr. Skirdo, this would be to be added to our current ordinance. This is not proposed as the pre-draft portion that we saw last meeting, correct?
Correct, right now, um, we've been asked to bring this forward, to add to the current ordinance. It would be, whatever form it takes, it would be incorporated into the new ordinance when it comes out.
Okay, thank you, just wanted clarification.
Okay. Mr. Spatafora. As I was listening to Mr. Bentley and uh, Mr. Tuckfield, I was looking at the revised draft that we have here for this very first section called intent, which had a good chunk of the revisions. And the first line of that, it says the purpose of this district is to encourage a complimentary mixture. And it goes on, and then the second line, there's the adjective compatible. So I think it would help, and I'm in support if there's a motion to table this, to have, you know, two of the authors of this. Mr. Van Tiflin and Mr. Box, maybe to explain, you know, more what they envision as far as being complimentary and compatible, which I think will perhaps give us further guidance as far as how this final draft of this flex is. Cause if, if it's gonna be first come, first serve in there, how would a single family home be compatible with a four story, um, commercial building or an industrial building? That would not make sense, but then you gotta look at what's complimentary and what's compatible. And I think it's within that intent that's revised, and I would like to hear what they were envisioning with that. Which may better help us with the final language.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, just bounce off of that a little bit. I think that there are ways that a four story building could be compatible with residential use, I don't think that they are inherently incompatible. Um, but it might require more to be compatible and complimentary than it would under a normal scenario. I think is, is part of what I would, I would see, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve or a motion to um, postpone?
Table? Or, yeah, I guess it would be postpone.
Yeah, I think postpone is a better word.
I think with the questions that everyone's asking, you know, in the absence of uh, Josh.
Mm-hmm.
I think we probably should postpone this, so I'd make that motion. Okay. Move from there. Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Bentley, call the roll please.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Merrily.
Yes.
Okay.
Bentley, yes.
Motion passes unanimously, alright, on to the number eight, public comments and non-agent items. And once again, for the record, there is no one in the audience tonight, commissioner's comments. Anyone have anything? I'm sure Mr. Tuckfield does, because over the weekend, he um.
So what did you trample, run like thirteen miles?
Thirteen, thirteen mile, thirteen point one, and when you're running thirteen point one miles, the point one actually makes a difference.
Well, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, just that, uh, I've been working for it since last year, I was supposed to run last year, I got COVID and uh, couldn't run. So I reset for this year and uh, very much enjoyed it, uh, gives you a tour through some of the portions of the city that you don't always see. Um, got to, got to run with a lot of people who were working hard and trying to get stuff done and I really enjoyed it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Eric, how long did it take you to do that?
Huh, three hours and thirty three seconds. And that point one miles, I thought I was under three mo- three hours, it was annoying when I saw the time.
Yeah, that's pretty much me walking a mile. Alright, anyone else?
I did have one comment, Mr. Chairman, uh, with regards to the special land use that we saw tonight. Um, Mr. Skirdo, this kinda goes back to maybe where we were talking about last week of areas where uh, we see an approval that maybe should be downstreamed or made more technical. Um, it might make sense to consider um, allowing as part of a standard review for gas stations to be able to put firewood and propane in front of them, we do allow it in pretty much all gas stations. I would think that we could make the technical requirements part of a standard review. And, you know, I, I was thinking about, I mentioned this to Mr. Oliver, we, we had a somewhat contentious um, commercial approval earlier this year that I'm not going to, to name directly, and we approved this special land use on that. And I've, can't tell you how many people who talked to me who got mad that we approved a special land use. And they don't know or care what the special land use was, they just figured it was something above and beyond when it was the most generic thing we could have done. And I think viewing something that we essentially do every time we're asked, as long as they meet health and safety requirements seems like it should go out of special land use and into a, into a use by right, um, for that division. So, that's all I had.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then we'll move on to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees' liaison update. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. A couple of things. The last board meeting, the, uh, the, uh, DPW requested some machinery. We're gonna go back to plowing our own snow, so, uh, we're gonna buy five, fifty thousand dollars worth of plows and attachments for a truck, and it'll, it'll be able to have our yard ready. When our staff comes in, it'll be all cleaned up. That'll be the first thing. We had a, an application for, uh, industrial development district on twenty-three mile road. So that was something that, it was an application. Now it's got to go through the process.
Sure.
And the twenty-five mile road tap grant sidewalk, or, uh, that's gonna be a grant, quite a bit of money if we get it. Uh, it's moving quite forward, but it's still a lot. Still got a lot to go. But we are moving forward on it. Um, kind of, the big thing for me was, um, we had a special meeting on, on, uh, the five-year master plan for park and rec. And we studied properties that we might want to look into developing or might not want to look into. We discussed, uh, purchasing some more property and, uh, but the, the, uh, a lot of sidewalk stuff, uh, pathway stuff, uh, but kind of an interesting thing kind of come up. If anyone's aware of the, uh, um, Macomb Township Lions on North Avenue, sadly, uh, because of no membership enrollment, uh, they're gonna disband. So the building is actually for sale along with twenty acres. So in that meeting, the township, um, decided that they were gonna proceed buying the property, uh, so, and use it not in the near, near future, but it'll be leads ours to, to have in the control because it's got quite a bit of, uh, river frontage. And today, it just looks like, you know, weeds and a low piece of ground, and it floods.
Beautiful.
But someday that, someday a resident could be sitting on there, and I'm hoping that resident will say, I'm sure happy somebody had the vision to buy this piece of property so I could sit here. Because it's happened to me on a lot of parks. You know, I've been in parks throughout the, throughout the world, actually, where people set aside property and said it can never get built on. And, um, it's nice. It's nice to see that. So, so, uh, that was some of the big news that, uh, I wanted to share with the board.
So, so the, is the township putting a, a bid on it, or have they already?
We're working with the Lions now.
We're, we're making an offer.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've not acquired it yet.
Nope.
We have not accepted an offer.
Nope.
I'm very interested in that.
Okay.
And that's it?
I'd like to see that.
Yep.
All right. ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was actually a relatively busy meeting for us. We had four items. Uh, there's two things that I wanted to bring up. Uh, the first one is that we had another question with regards to enclosed or partially enclosed structures. Uh, we've had a couple of them within the last couple of months. Um, it's something I'm gonna be watching in the ordinance, but we've had, uh, some confusion on what is enclosed and what is partially enclosed. And, um, so that this, this variance again brought up that question. Um, and it's something that I think we should look at in the ordinance. Um, the second item that I wanted to bring up from that meeting, um, you know, uh, sometimes there's confusion as to what the ZBA's role is, um, in a lot of corridors. Not gonna say this is one of them, but there is in a lot of places. And I think one of the things that the ZBA should do, if it's working well, is make sure that we don't deviate as a township from the ordinance as designed by the board, as recommended by the planning commission and the planning, uh, staff, uh, except for good reason. And, and while, um, legal people will tell you that you cannot set a precedent with a variance, um, practically speaking, I think you can, you can do the wrong thing and, and, and say something is allowable that isn't. That said, we did have one item, uh, this last meeting that, um, a resident was requesting, um, actually, it's still kind of foggy exactly what they were requesting, but they wanted to call an RV not an RV. Basically what they wanted to do, so they could park it in their driveway. And it was somewhat contentious. Um, and we had a lot of appeals on it, and the ZBA, um, denied the request and did not define it that way, which, uh, sounds simple, but I think it was an important microcosm of the ZBA enforcing the ordinance, which is not always done, and making sure that we maintained what was the spirit and intent of the ordinance, uh, and didn't, um, water it down for expediency because someone was in front of us. And if we had granted something like that, uh, I don't know how the township would have kept RVs out of any driveway within the city for any reason at any time. So, um, I think it's worth underlying. It's not always easy to do. This one wasn't as difficult as others, but ZBA had a, has an important function, and it's to support this board and to support the township board, and it was executed at that meeting. So just wanted to bring up that example of it. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Planning Department items?
Uh, yeah, and the only item I gotta bring up is Mr. Aloya and the, myself and the planning department are working on a training session to bring in front of the planning commission, the ZBA for one evening. And we're going through a PowerPoint right now to figure out how to present it. And it will be on roles and responsibilities of all the groups, uh, risk management, how to conduct meetings, things like that. So I don't know if Mr. Aloya wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I think that we're, we'll do some legal updates.
Yeah.
Um, I think we want to get into really the nuances of the meetings and, and what we feel is appropriate to talk about, not appropriate to talk about, maybe to, to limit legal liability in the future and things of that nature.
Yeah. I heard they were recommending four-minute time limits on me and Bentley.
Well, that's just uncalled for. Two minutes? When, when would this training, uh, take place possibly?
We're, we're gonna try to do it by the end of the year. Um, that's a goal. I know we're trying to do the zoning ordinance too, so we're, we're gonna get it done in the next couple of months.
Okay. That sounds great, as a matter of fact. Anything else?
I don't know. That, it, uh, the zoning ordinance, we're just proceeding. After the last meeting, we're going with the next iteration, and we'll be bringing that back for review.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned at...
Seven fifty.
Yep. Oh, that clock's actually accurate.